Organizational meeting or special meeting of Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. I will now turn the meeting over to Mayor Ackley. Would you like to do the pledge, please?
Yes.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Dear God, we ask you to provide, to preside over this meeting tonight. Help us to act as a unified team to open our hearts, make fair and just decisions, and improve our community. Also, may we come together as a whole with the courage and strength to show kindness and compassion as we collectively work towards the betterment of Waldo. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Yes. Ackley?
Here.
Ambrose?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Locke?
Here.
Lublin?
Here.
Osnick is absent. Woods?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we did have correspondence from Councilmember Osnick that he would not be able to attend, excuse me, this meeting.
Okay, I think we should have a motion to excuse Councilmember Osnick for this evening, please.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried. We do have a quorum, so we will continue on with our meeting. Do I have any requests tonight for agenda changes?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add number two to new business. It would be for a discussion on the open position for the Rec Commission.
Excuse me?
I would like to add number two to new business. It would be for the open position on the Rec Commission.
Okay, okay. You have to bear with me just a little bit tonight. Okay. Is there any other requests for agenda changes? Okay. The first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation by our auditors of Pfeiffer, Hanover, and Palca, the Audit Presentation for the Physical Year 2025. Would you like to approach the periphery, and please?
Well, thank you very much. This is quite a crowd here tonight. It's good to see the city of Waldo Lake with everyone coming out for the meeting. Obviously, you know, we have some members of City Council that won't be here in the future, but you've done a great job, and there's going to be obviously new members coming in.
Recording in progress.
But, are we outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, well, again, I want to start out saying too that, you know, it's really a privilege to be your independent auditors. When we first started the audit, as far as for the city of Waldo Lake, we were asked by a larger firm to actually come in and, to come in to do the audit because they really were concerned about the city being a going concern, whether you're going to meet your financial obligations in the future. And so we said, yeah, we'll come in and, you know, see if, you know, we can't help in that process, but, you know, we did not have a problem with that, and that was many years ago. And at that time, there was a concern about, you know, as I said, meeting your financial conditions, also you had some retirement benefits, there was concern about meeting those, and various other things. And I just, I just wanted to mention to the outgoing council members that during that period of time, you have accomplished a lot, which I'm going to mention a couple of those things tonight. The most important thing in this report, a rather lengthy report, is our opinion. So our opinion is the first thing the state of Michigan is going to look at, and the good news is we are issuing an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that the independent auditor can issue. The state of Michigan is going to look at this right away to determine whether, again, you're in good financial condition with them. Also, should you have to go off for any bonding, it's important for your bond rating. So when I get the opinion, which hopefully tonight, when I finish my presentation, you will approve the audit report so we can submit to the state of Michigan on a timely basis. So some of those other items I mentioned earlier that I wanted to highlight, though, that occurred, and many of these occurred even in last year. So I did want to start out by saying that the good news was in your general fund, you were able to increase the fund balance by 1.1 million, which is a 24% increase, so you finished the year at 5.8 million. Now, again, if you look back in the reports that we gave you in the graphs, you'll see that it was back in '17 where that fund balance was quite small. And what you've done during this period of time was stay within budget, cut costs, and add to that fund balance, which is important for the financial condition for the city. Another item was you had some legacy debt for retirement benefits that were offered actually prior to 2010. So it wasn't a current liability that was occurred, this was, occurred a long time ago, and you have been able to continually reduce that liability. Just in the last current year, you were able to reduce the liability from 7.2 million down to 6.5. And then, just to clarify too, all your current benefits are being paid during the year, so there's nothing adding to this. So again, this is another liability for the city that's been reduced. There was also a retirement healthcare liability that had been started years ago that is being phased out. That liability too started out this year at 1.3 million and is down to 1.1. And the importance of mentioning all these, these different things that happened during the year is to understand that the financial condition of the city has continually improved, which has been really important going forward, you know, for the, actually for also the future City Council to understand, you know, what's, you know, what's happened in the past and where you're going, which is all good. I don't, you know, we don't see anything changing that way, it should continue to improve and get better as you go. One other item too is we don't really see it very often in our larger governmental units, but currently the city has no outstanding bonds payable. Those were actually paid off the year before. So again, you know, from a financial standpoint, you're in really good condition going forward, and, you know, we wanted to mention that because, you know, there's a lot of hard work that went into that, so we did want to bring that to everyone's attention. And then with that, I just open up for any questions, or, you know, at some point if you could approve the audit report.
Do we have any questions of the auditor this evening?
Just one comment. Unmodified opinion?
Yes.
The highest standard.
Yes, it is.
That's what we always look for.
All right, just good.
So the city has done a good job.
Yes.
That's what it's all about.
Yes, very, very good.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I don't see any hands, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-30 of the City Council, the city of Waldo Lake, to direct and authorize independent auditors to file timely the 2025 year-end financial statements with the state.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment or any comment? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I'm on my, my new list. Forgive me.
Pick me if you're so wrong.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick is absent. Woods?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carried, unanimous? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Always a pleasure having you, you come with such good news.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paffra.
Okay, we have a few resolutions to take care of tonight, and the first one is a proposed Resolution 2025-31 ratifying the November 4th, 2025, general election results for the office of mayor.
Woods will make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-31, a resolution ratifying the November 4th, 2025, general election result for the office of mayor, accepting Richard Gunther as mayor.
Ambrose will second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any comment? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick? Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two is Resolution 2025-32 ratifying the November 4th, 2025, general election results for the office of council member. Do I have a motion, please?
Locke will make that motion.
Woods will second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick? Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick is absent. Woods?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carried, unanimous? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Always a pleasure having you, you come with such good news.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paffra.
Okay, we have a few resolutions to take care of tonight, and the first one is a proposed Resolution 2025-31 ratifying the November 4th, 2025, general election results for the office of mayor.
Woods will make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-31, a resolution ratifying the November 4th, 2025, general election results for the office of council member, accepting Dennis O'Rourke as a council member.
Ambrose will second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any comment? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick? Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have proposed Resolution 2025-34 ratifying November 4th, 2025, general election for the office of council member. Do I have a motion?
Ambrose will make that motion.
Woods will second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnick? Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before we finish and sign out of the old council, I would ask if there's anybody on the council who would like to make any comments tonight.
I would, Mayor. Well, I think I should go first, and then, and then you will be taking over. And so do I, and so do I, absolutely. As a council member for the last 10 years, it has been my honor and privilege to serve a city I care deeply about. Having lived and raised my family in the same home for 41 years, the Waldo Lake community will always be a part of my heart and who I am. The City Council's position pays $35 per meeting with no perks, no benefits, and absolutely no extras. My service and volunteering of time on the council, DDA, and library board for these past 24 years collectively has never been about the money as there is next to none. I am immensely proud of all council has accomplished over the last decade. We've completed major road and infrastructure improvements throughout the city, invested in modern police, fire, and DPW equipment, we strengthened our emergency services, and upgraded and added to our public safety campus, as well as improved our parks and downtown areas. All of these upgrades, which total millions of dollars, were completed without raising taxes and without special assessments. Our police department has the lowest average labor hour cost in the neighboring communities while delivering excellent coverage and protection. Our fire department is rated in the top 5% of all fire departments statewide with average emergency response times often under four minutes. Our city finances are strong after making smart decisions to recover from near bankruptcy in 2010. Our departments work together as a team, and these are just some of the examples of Waldo Lake's achievements. I am proud of the progress we have made, we saved before we spent, and today Waldo Lake is 100% debt-free. The election is over. The election is over, and I congratulate the new mayor and the new council members on a successful campaign. I fully support the new council and wish you nothing but success. The direction of the city is now in your hands, and I hope you continue to prioritize fiscal responsibility, public safety, and infrastructure construction. I wish you good luck.
Is there anyone else on council who would like to make any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to echo what my fellow council members said. We, it has been a great honor to serve the citizens of Waldo Lake. I'm very proud of what we accomplished, and I wish nothing but luck to the new council and mayor. We love this city, we all love this city, and we want the best for everybody in it. And I'd like to cede the rest of my time to Mayor Let Gunther.
Dennis, you have a job to do in a minute, I'll put my hand up for you, okay? So, thank you very much, everyone. You know, tonight we recognize an extraordinary legacy of service. Linda, you've devoted your life, basically, living here forever and being on this council and as mayor. You've done that. You've served on council since 79. That's amazing, right? 12, 12 years as a mayor, 12 years as our mayor. Through countless accomplishments, Linda's led Waldo Lake with strength and heart, guiding us through serious major financial problems, right? And through the uncertainty of those crazy COVID years. Thank you, Linda. When my family moved here 20 years ago, she put her trust in me, and she appointed me to the zoning board of appeals, later to the tax board of appeals. Linda, I'll always be grateful. To Mayor Ackley and to the council members, John is not here with us, but I've known John a long time, he used to work for me at Ford. Mindy, Bennett, thank you for your service. You've all made courageous decisions, even when they were difficult and really unpopular, right? It's a very tough thing to do. Because of you, you cared about the future of the city more than popularity or politics, okay? Your dedication in what essentially, Bennett, you touched on it, volunteer jobs, right, that take a lot of effort. Your dedication has put Waldo Lake in a position on way more solid ground financially, and it's given us and the incoming council team a chance to build a future and solve some of the problems that our residents deserve. We're not without challenges. I think you guys know it very well, some of the people in the audience know, we've got an infrastructure that needs serious repair, and it's not going to be easy. We're likely in this next council to have some of those same tough decisions, right? How do we get A and B done at the same time as doing what we do every day, right? Very difficult role. But because of the foundation you guys built, we can finish what you started, and we'll always have that fiscal responsibility while I'm here, that's definitely not changing. Linda, thank you guys for what you did. Continue the legacy that you guys have earned by supporting this new council team, guiding us. Answer the phone when we call and go, I have no idea what to do, because you guys have been here a long time, right? And I appreciate that. When we reach out for advice, please remember we'd always like you to be a forever part of the team. Linda, there's, you, you own this place, this is your town, so you're always welcome, and you're always invited to give us support. Dennis? Your experience really matters, and everybody I've talked to, right, they've all said the same thing. Your voices are always welcome. To everyone here this evening, citizens, business owners, neighbors, friends, I got a guy drove in from Canada to see this. I commit that the new city council will capitalize on that foundation you left for us. Government you can trust. A government dedicated to transparency, Dennis, we've talked about that, respect and accountability. On behalf of a grateful community, thank you guys for your service, thank you for your belief in Waldo Lake, and thank you for helping us reach this moment. Mayor Ackley? And you guys are going to hate this because I never shut up. Mayor Ackley, please accept these flowers, this is a symbol of our appreciation for everything you've done.
Very nice. I guess I, does anybody else on council want to speak? Okay, I guess I will be the last to speak. Before we do our signed eye, I want to say that my 46 years on council and as mayor has been the greatest privilege, or one of the greatest privileges of my life. Serving the city of Waldo Lake has been a goal of my family since I came into the world. Waldo Lake has been our life, it's been my life, and I plan to continue to live here the rest of my life. So I hope that you, Mr. Mayor, in your current council, and what you have left of my current council, will keep this the same great city that it has been since 1954, and I have full faith that you are going to do that. I have full faith in you. And I wish you the best. I'm not going to vanish into the sunset, I will still be around. Anything that might be needed or asked me to do, I will be here. And I want to thank everyone, and I will say in my years on council, this has probably been one of the best councils that I've worked with, and city staff has been amazing. They're, they're on top of everything. And Dennis Witt has just been another amazing person to the city of Waldo Lake in taking care of us. And I want to thank all the city people for the support that they've given me over the years, and I wish you, I wish you new people the best of luck, and I think you will be good for the city.
Okay.
Audio features. Okay. At this time, the current city council will do what is called signed eye, and we will get up, and the new council will take over.
Okay, we're in a slight transition, we are going to be calling up the new mayor-elect and council-elect momentarily. There is a car with the headlights on, though, that I wanted to, it looks like the license plate is DC or OC 67208. It looks like a Toyota, maybe, a red Toyota in the parking lot with their lights on. Okay, we are going to continue our meeting. Mayor?
I'm not getting married. Okay.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Wald Lake, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member according to the best of my ability.
I absolutely do.
You can have one number that is online. I would like to remove the address.
I, uh, thanks.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Wald Lake, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member according to the best of my ability.
I will. Thank you.
This one, and the gold one, please.
Okay.
I will come after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And if you could please have a seat?
You got it. Thanks, Jennifer.
Congratulations. For the...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And if you could please have a seat?
You got it. Thanks, Jennifer.
Congratulations. For the...
I will.
If you guys don't remember, everyone is standing on line at the moment. Mr. Arnold, can you hear me and see me okay?
Yes, I can see...
Okay. I am going to ask that you raise your right hand, please, and affirm or say I do when I'm done with the oath, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the State of Michigan, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Wald Lake, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. So I would like to introduce our newly-elected city council. Mayor Gunther.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have... I regret to ask this. Do we have any audience participation? I think you guys have participated fine.
Sure.
So...
Are we sure we got the right mayor?
You take that.
Sir, you have two minutes, please. State your name and address.
I think I can fulfill that. Name is, I'm the city janitor. How are you guys? I want to say, this is actually, we're gathered here today, this is an amazing, amazing gift from God. You know, the Lord touched Wald Lake, honestly. This is, this is His doing. It's amazing. It needed to be done, you know? I've been here for 15 years. I'm not going to talk about all the things that I've experienced, but I will talk about what's going to happen next. It's going to be an amazing journey with people that are going to do great for our city. All is one. All is one for the citizens, for the business owners, for the visitors that come through our town, for all. I thank the old council and mayor that are going out for their services, and I anticipate our beautiful new council and mayor coming in. God bless you guys, and God bless our city.
Mayor Gunther, we do need to address the ratification of a mayor pro tem. There will be additional audience participation. We're just going to continue with the agenda. If you could just stand by, I'm not sure who, just stand by. We do have, according to the resolution which is provided to you in your packets that you have, it's on page 26, and we do not have, as per our charter, an incumbent that received the number of votes. So it is going to be up to the current council to have a vote of who they would like to nominate and accept and appoint as mayor pro tem.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
I would like to recommend or nominate Dennis O'Rourke.
Second. Woods, second. Thanks, Jennifer.
Absolutely, Ambrose, third.
Thank you.
Don't think that's necessary, but we're good.
Let's do it.
Thanks, Casey.
Okay.
Roll call vote momentarily. Ambrose.
Yes.
Arnold.
I just didn't hear the audios. It's for Dennis.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Locke.
Yes.
O'Rourke.
Yes.
Shinzeen.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Gunther.
Yes.
Thank you. So... I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city of Wald Lake, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member according to the best of my ability.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you. You too.
Have a seat.
All right.
Do we want to finish audience participation? I thought there was somebody else.
Yes, we are moving on to audience participation. So if you do wish to speak, please approach the podium, and you can address the chair. Please provide your name and address.
My law, I do not have to. I don't want my address in the city minutes. It's a safety risk, and it's civil rights. I proved that last meeting, anyway. I'd like to welcome all the new members and hope for great improvements, because as I began to research what goes on in the city, it's deplorable. Would you be taping, by any chance, could you? Because, Mr. Witt? Mr. Witt? Who do you, who employs you, sir?
The minor...
Who employs Mr. Witt? Who are you employed by? Who signs your paycheck? Who signs your contract?
Mayor, do you want me to answer? I can't.
I'm sorry?
What's our question?
My question to you is, who do you work for?
I work for the city council that you're looking at right now.
That is correct. You do not, you work for the city, and you work for the citizens. So I want you to tell me why, no, I'm not done. I would like you to tell me why you're, have budgeted to 227 when you can't even budget 24. And I have the proof. I want to know where the contracts are. I would like to request new city council frees all spending, because the DDA money is missing, the TIF money is missing. Could you provide a updated DDA budget of where the money's going? And I'd like to also ask you how many positions you are holding. And we all know that your ego, they have ended up in the minutes. So you serve as the city manager, you serve as the budget director, you serve as the city clerk. Can't complain. Maybe you can tell me why you tore down the trees over here, but you built, bought yourself another few trees over there. So if this is a 301 that you applied for, why wasn't this a 301? Now, you got the Army Corps of Engineers report in May.
May I follow?
Clearly delineated, because I know that Mr. Witt is taking the public safety department head, and by MCOL's police rules, he does not qualify, and his hearing would be the number-one issue. I don't care if you're an ex-police officer, it was not in Michigan. You need to provide all the budgets. Why was the 25 budget removed from online? Why were all the agendas and minutes removed online? Why is there no DDA contract? And I'd also like to know, don't even start to smile, honey. You remember those intergovernmental contracts that equal a couple million dollars? So you get paid to do a job. You have assistant. Your assistant has assistant, and you can't budget a balance, but you have got the Bs to write 2027, when you know we have new approvals. Now, I'm asking for all money to be stopped. He's got a credit card. He shows no receipts for any of the spending, because the former council deemed it unnecessary to provide that for the auditors. Your numbers in the state audit do not match your budget. There's $8 million missing. You have habitually, since the 80s, fired the police chief, reduced their benefits. I don't have full-time EMS. By the fire chief, five average on a call, but we only have two if we're lucky. And those are by your words, okay? I want to see the budget, the DDA budget, and all your receipts. How dare you charge intergovernmental transfers in millions of dollars when that's your job? You claim we've been in arrears for 10 years, but you've been the manager in 10 years. So tell me, what improvements have you made? You tore up the wetland. We can't access the lake. You bought EPA sites that you know of. This is an EPA disaster zone? You put a lien on it and took it over, now you're going to sell it. I know what's going on. So there are no department head contracts, there are no budgets, there are no payrolls. What's so funny? You think I didn't do my research, don't you? So now you have new people to answer to? I'm requesting the locks get changed. He spent $7,000 last year changing locks. Do we even have that many? No longer gets access. His credit card gets confiscated. He bought three new vehicles in August on the DDA's morning. Oh, God, I got to make sure Mr. Witt can hear me, because he can't pass the MCOL's test. You know, to take that public safety director, so you're taking the budget head, the public safety head, the city clerk head. The sewage money disappeared, the police money disappeared, but you gave yourself $44,000 in one month of benefits. And you screwed our people. Now, they save lives for a living. How dare you ask them to work on part-time, and I see you're paying cash? So what do I got to go tell you, I need a social worker, as you claim, just to get paid? Oh, there's no video tonight. I'm sorry. Since you work for the people, why would this not be continuity? Why was this not budgeted? So either you're not doing your job, or you're just screwing people. Which is it? Like some answers, sir. Where's the DDA budget? Why is the 2025 budget not online? How dare you post 2027?
Ma'am, may I interrupt? May I interrupt? You've got some interesting questions, and I think maybe we can have some time outside of this meeting.
Definitely.
I'd love to sit with you and maybe the Pfeiffer accountant auditors.
You do know, I'm done.
Yeah, maybe, ma'am, we could do that.
This man, and we will, and I'll be happy to help, because I have all of it.
I think a lot of times...
He needs to be called to task. I want to make sure you can hear me, Mr. Witt. You don't seem to have any answers, but you appine about everybody else and all their projects. Did you not say at the last meeting, I had political ambitions? I got wit ambitions. And I know about your severance, but all it takes is a felony. And from you, I would like every contract for every employee in the city. It's supposed to be publicly posted. I would also like to see all the resolutions and amendments that you made illegally. Oh, and by the way, Witt, could you please explain to me where you've been posting public notice without changing the date of the meeting? Can you hear me now?
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you. Hey, look, I'll make one statement. I'll state one thing. A lot of times, people are very concerned about things because of the lack of transparency. Okay? And I understand.
I saw.
You look at stuff, and you look at the website, and there's not things online.
I saw.
Yeah, but you look at things, there's not things online. We're going to, we're going to do something about that, because we really, really need transparency. But I just, I commit, I commit to you, I commit to you and everybody else. We're going to treat people with respect.
Okay, I got one more.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to invoke the two-minute rule, but we hear you.
One more thing. Over abuse of power, you actually sent a fraudulent social welfare check to my house. You going to pay for it? Because you're wasting people's time, and you called in a favor, because there was no report at the county sheriff's office. Are you hearing me now?
Ma'am, thank, thank you, thank you for your time. Jennifer. Jennifer, can you make, you make a note? We're going to have to find some time for her. Because I would like to speak to her about some of the things. I think a lot of times, when you have that lack of transparency, there is an obvious opportunity for misunderstandings, conspiracy theories, and, and I just want to make everybody understand, we will listen to your concerns.
Yes.
Right? And we're going to, we'll make sure, but I definitely, I think some of, some of our concerns might be valid because of that lack of transparency. So let us get to it. There's a new council.
Did you not say at the last meeting, I had political ambitions? I got Witt ambitions. And I know about your severance, but all it takes is a felony. And from you, I would like every contract for every employee in the city. It's supposed to be publicly posted. I would also like to see all the resolutions and amendments that you made illegally. Oh, and by the way, Witt, could you please explain to me where you've been posting public notice without changing the date of the meeting? Can you hear me now?
Ma'am, ma'am. Thank you. Hey, look, I'll make one statement. I'll state one thing. A lot of times, people are very concerned about things because of the lack of transparency. Okay? And I understand.
I saw.
You look at stuff, and you look at the website, and there's not things online.
I saw.
Yeah, but you look at things, there's not things online. We're going to do something about that, because we really, really need transparency. I commit, I commit to you, I commit to you and everybody else. We're going to treat people with respect.
Okay, I got one more.
I'm not going to invoke the two-minute rule, but we hear you.
One more thing. Over abuse of power, you actually sent a fraudulent social welfare check to my house. You going to pay for it? Because you're wasting people's time, and you called in a favor, because there was no report at the county sheriff's office. Are you hearing me now?
Ma'am, thank you, thank you for your time. Jennifer. Jennifer, can you make a note? We're going to have to find some time for her. Because I would like to speak to her about some of the things. I think a lot of times, when you have that lack of transparency, there is an obvious opportunity for misunderstandings, conspiracy theories. And I just want to make everybody understand, we will listen to your concerns.
Yes.
Right? And we're going to, we'll make sure. But I definitely, I think some of her concerns might be valid because of that lack of transparency. So let us get to it. There's a new council. I don't, I don't think the old council was doing something, you know, that was wrong. And I think it's a lack of transparency, and maybe not understanding that there's people that want to see. Right? And they have every right to. So Jen, we're going to have to find some time. I would like to spend some time with her, and maybe we can get the Pfeiffer team in to do that as well with us, if she wants to really dig into the finances. Because sometimes, there's intergovernment transfers that are really, they're required, right? So there's things that are definitely, people just need to understand how the government works. And I'm not saying I know everything, because I, we've just got on board. We're, we're fresh, right? So trust me, we'll understand your concerns, and there will not be any shenanigans, okay? Yeah, I guess we got one more. I'm really getting thirsty, guys, so. Let's, let's all cry next, next week, at the December 2nd meeting.
I just want, I just want to have my say after all these years. I worked here for 16 years as a code enforcement officer. I've moved on. I worked here for 16 years as a code enforcement officer. A lot of people don't like me, some people do. It's called life. But I will tell you this much. The code of ordinances is, the community are supposed to be adhered to. And there's a whole lot, I don't know anymore, I've been gone for seven years. There's a whole lot of, don't mess with that guy, that's somebody's son. That would drive me crazy. It was like I was a puppet stuck in the middle. I had a heart attack. Mr. Witt called me in his office and laughed at me, because he paid me for three days. He didn't have to, but he took care of me. And the thing that grinds my ass the most, pardon my French, is when I left here, I sent a very nice resignation letter to council. That man destroyed it. It never was read to council. So he can control the narrative. That's what he does. He puts people in trick bags, controls their narratives. And another thing, there was this lady who worked here named Janelle. She ran the fruit market out here, the farmer's market. My wife drove the short bus. He said to one of these ladies here, to ask my wife to tell Janelle that she could be fired if my wife wanted her job. However, my wife would have to fire Janelle. He's a puppeteer. He's this tricks master. He's done this all over the country for years. I have no interest in that man. He's the devil. And I told my wife I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I'm bad. Nice to see you again, partner.
I hate to ask this, is there any other audience participation? Good? I, I, we got another one.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, okay. Hi, Rick Greenwell, 395 West Wald Lake Drive. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thanks, man.
You couldn't come at a better time. Listen, I'm not real happy with the past mayor and the board under her realm. And I'll tell you a few things, a few reasons why. We got rid of a water department that we used to have. If you get a broken pipe in your house, and you need help, and you need that water shut off, good luck. No more five minutes. Good luck. Took market days and the beach party away. A lot of people liked those things, good family events. Remember the embarrassing bike trail and train station fiasco? Yeah, that was under Linda Ackley and the current council. There's still three people here from the past council. You were part of it. How about the tree incident? Everybody remember the tree incident? One of the most horrible things I've ever seen in my life. That happened right here, right down the street. And people drove around, people in this room, drove around and watched it happen. How about Stomperson? Yeah, they weren't interfering with the elections. They were out stomping down people's signs and lying about it. Great. Well, I got to say this. Three remaining council people from Linda's regime, reign, regime, you should just resign. You've been along, you've been rubber-stamping everything right along to get us where we are right now. Sounds like there's a lot of chaos and turmoil going on, and I haven't heard any of you people stand up and face the music to the mayor or to city manager. For that reason, you should just step down, because you're really useless at this point in time. I'm going to wrap it up here. Sorry. Shame on the ex-mayor, I wish she was here, maybe she's listening. The shenanigans that take place every time there's a campaign, an election, it's disastrous. And it's just uncalled for. There were sexually and racially charged male sent to some of the people running for positions here. Right here in this city, it happened. Somebody did it. I wonder who. I wonder who knows who did it. So the greenhouse and the former, and the former mayor, they team up for a big old trunk-or-treat combination election thing, whatever you want to call it. Well, I'm not stupid. I'm just a regular guy, okay? And I'm sorry, having a trunk-or-treat event for children right next to a busy road with all kinds of trip hazards, next to a pot shop. I'm sorry, folks, I think a little different than some. That's just me. Wait, wait. There's a safer alternative, if you're going to have a nice thing for the children and the families like that. There's a really better alternative, I do believe. Right next door, at the $3 million Bridgefield. Why do we have to have it on Pontiac Trail, across from a marijuana institution? When we have all of this that we're so proud of? I'm missing something, folks. And you three people, you had a chance to speak up about that situation. How do you feel about that? You got, you got kids, don't you? You okay with them going down there and, at whatever age? You know, you can't, can't have a business like that within 1,000 feet of a school. But there is a clause that allows cities to make adjustments. Obviously, they did that here. And I'm not okay with that, guys. We could have had it right next door here. Guess what? Here's the kicker. You know what's right next door to this big, giant, fancy $3 million Bridgefield? A police station and a fire station. How's that for safety for your children, guys? Doesn't take a rocket scientist, a little common sense. The last mayor failed the city. The council, under her reign, failed the city. There's all kinds of issues, we all know, a lot of them. A lot of them are going to come up, going to be sorted out. And that's good. But you three, you should just step aside, make room for someone else who may have the city's best interests in mind. That would be better. Thank you.
I, go ahead, Giovanni.
Are we, if we...
I am thirsty as hell.
Next time, next time. No, 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 next time, next time, next time. Next time, next time.
No, go, Giovanni, go, go, go!
My name is Giovanni Johnson. I live at 1648 Wimbledon Drive, here in Wald Lake, Michigan. I will try to be as brief as possible, because I know we all have been here for a while. So I had the opportunity to join the Park and Recreation Board back in 2020. Mayor Linda Ackley, I came out to, I believe, to the county building at one point. Long story short, I wanted to talk about some shows, festivals, stuff like that. That's what I do professionally. She invited me out to a meeting. I came and talked with everyone. And I ended up being a part of the Park and Rec Commission about a week later. I was thankful for that opportunity. And I thank you again, Mayor Ackley, for that. I, I'm thankful for everyone that I see here. That's really what I just wanted to say. Mr. Arnold, I don't know if you can hear me, but hi. And of course, everybody else here. I walked the campaign trail with these guys, and I see so many familiar faces here tonight, of people that we went and talked to. And just to know that they showed up and actually came out and stood on what they said they were going to do, reinstilled not only in me faith in the city of Wald Lake, but in the American way. I'm looking forward to everybody here. I've had a chance, outside of these four gentlemen, to really establish a relationship, not only with Mr. Witt, but Mr. Woods. And I also have heard some good things about the other two people that are on council. I know that just like, I'm a believer in Jesus, it took him seven days to build the world, right? So that all being said, I would ask everybody here, let's have faith in the four people here that we've elected. Let's have faith in the elected officials that are already in office, that they can come together, that we can come together, like we did here tonight. And that we can bring something positive, and build on what was done positive, and keep moving forward to the future. But patience, I think patience is the biggest thing that we have to do now. We showed up, right? We showed out. We elected a whole new council, a new mayor. But now we got to trust Mr. Ambrose. We got to trust Mr. Woods. We got to trust Ms. Locke. We got to trust Mr. Witt. We got to trust the city attorney, everybody here, city staff, that they're going to work together cohesively for the best interest of all of us. I love Wald Lake, I love you all. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Giovanni, you may be my speechwriter from now on. Thank you very much. And you really, you really touched on everything I was thinking. And we've, we've got a team here that works hard, right? Police and fire, Jennifer and the women in the office that do everything to keep this place running. Dennis, right? Ryan, I've known Ryan a long time. Casey, I've known you since you were a little kid. Camera, thanks for your help. We've got a lot of work to do. And, look, a lot of the concerns people have are about a transparency problem, that some things might be founded, some things might be unfounded. I believe most things are unfounded. But if we get the transparency that we deserve, and you all deserve, I think things will be a little bit different. And trust me, I have a seven-year-old boy that's over there who needs to go to sleep. And I wouldn't let anything happen to this place, because it's his town, too. Anybody got a motion for adjournment? Because I really don't feel like doing anything else tonight. Anybody? I'll make a motion to adjourn. I would do, I would do the term, the manager's report and everybody else's report, but I would like to see if somebody would make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a new business item for the 2026. Okay.
I would like to pause that or postpone that until the second. We are doing the second.
The next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd.
Yeah. We really need time to look at that and decide what we want to do. Because I am hoping that we propose at that meeting that we go to two meetings a month. Because I really believe that's part of the transparency problem, right? You can't really get everything you need done in one, one-and-a-half-hour meeting. And it just says to everybody, well, they must be having meetings outside of an open meetings act, and we're not going to do that. Okay? There's going to, we're going to post the meetings, or let everybody know, right? If we can find a way to do it. I'm going to need some volunteers from, from the community. We need a website that's functional. We need an app that will allow people to see everything they want, right? I saw what Anthony Noble has in White Lake. That's pretty cool. So we got some work to do to get you guys happy. But let's postpone that if everybody's okay with that. Do we need a roll call or a motion on that? No, we're just punt? Roll call on... Do we need a roll call on that? No, we don't need a roll call. I'll go ahead and make, O'Rourke will make a motion to adjourn this evening. And I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's been wonderful. Thank you. Very, very cool, guys. Thank you. Second. We got a second. Roll call, Jennifer? Roll call, Jen? To adjourn.
Locke?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Shinzing?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gunther?
Yes.
Thank you.